I'd like to open the March tenth meeting of the Planning Board of Northampton. We traditionally start off every night by asking if there's anyone here who has public comment on something other than what's on the agenda, so it's just a way for encouraging feedback or comment from the public. Is anyone here for something other than the, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, the Bridge Road Hatfield Street? Do you have public comment about something other than the Hatfield Street project? Okay. So, that as it may, I'd like to open, take the first agenda item, which is the site plan review for LP, Odette Builders, common driveway that serves two duplexes and two single-family residences, site plan review for residential structure setback further than others on block face at sixty-eight Hatfield Street, map ID eighteen C dash forty-five. Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Bill Cannon. And with me tonight is the builder, the tenant from LP, Larry Odette from LP Builders, Inc. So we're here tonight to present a project to the Planning Board. And afterwards, we can, I guess, have a discussion about it. There are some issues that we'd like to present to the Planning Board that are different than the plans that you see in front of you, so we want to kind of get that out and kind of iron it out a little bit, and hopefully we can kind of, you know, proceed with some common understanding. The plans that were submitted, as you, as was briefly described, was for four lots, and on the four lots, we were proposing two, a duplex on two, no, two of the lots, so two duplexes, and two singles on two of the lots. And we brought a revised plan. What we'd like to do is to do duplexes on each of the lots. So where we have a total of six units now on the plans that you see before you, we'd like to do eight units, so in other words duplex on each, on each lot. And as we understand it from the zoning bylaw, the duplexes are allowed by right on a lot in some parts, if we have the right setbacks and the area and everything else, which we do for the lot. They had to be slightly modified, which we'll show you on the plan, to accommodate one of, one of the duplex units, because we have a freestanding garage that we're proposing with it. And I'll explain to you once we get the, once we get it up on the screen here, just how to kind of go over it and kind of show you. Carolyn, shall you just kind of continue on the?
Yeah, why don't you start here?
Okay. All right, okay. So the plan that you had, we had, we had a duplex proposed for the corner lot of Bridge Road and Hatfield Street, and a duplex for this lot right in here. This was a single, and this was a single. What we'd like to do is put a duplex on this, on this lot, and duplex on this lot right in here. These two duplexes would have freestanding two-car garages that would be used by the owners of these duplexes on these two lots right in here. The concept is still the same in that the driveways and everything else would come off of a shared driveway that would enter and exit off of Hatfield Street. As you can see, kind of loops around, comes back onto Hatfield Street. That is the same as it's shown on the site plan. And one of the compelling reasons for doing the shared driveway, which came out of our roundtable discussions with the departments, was so that we could avoid having any kind of driveways or minimize the number of driveways on Bridge Road. We know Bridge Road is, is pretty busy, and by avoiding, having driveways coming out on Bridge Road, we avoid that conflict, we think, pretty successfully with the traffic flow on Bridge Road. And like I say, this was, this came out at the roundtable discussions and seemed to be, everybody seemed to be kind of really strongly in favor of trying to have the service to these units off of Hatfield Street. Along with that, we also are showing on the plans utility connections into Hatfield Street rather than on Bridge Road. Again, same kind of concept where we want to try to avoid any kind of disruption to Bridge Road we can. And so we're proposing a water line connection onto Hatfield Street that would come in on our shared driveway and service the individual unit. So these would be presumed to be individually owned, so they'd all have their own water connections from this extension from Hatfield Street into our site. Similarly, we're going to do that with a sewer. Sewer would come in off of Hatfield Street and service the buildings, if you will, from the back of the buildings as well. And we'll have, the plan is to construct a new manhole out over the existing sewer and extend a sewer, a line into the site, and that would terminate with another manhole as well. Again, this was another item where it was felt like, if, again, if we could kind of do all the utilities on Hatfield Street and everything, like the connections and the street disruption and everything else, that would be much more desirable than trying to do it off of Bridge Road. Drainage, as far as drainage is concerned for the project, we tried to handle that on-site. There was a designer from the Planning Department to try to avoid any, try to connections, any, any kind of connections to the street storm. And we think we've come up with a successful plan for doing that, which basically the back of the whole site would, is designed and graded such that its surface flows into the central area of the loop here, of the, the shared driveway loop, into a rain garden, which would be heavily planted, and the water would infiltrate into, into this area here, into this rain garden area here. We also will be taking roof drains from these two units and connecting them into an infiltration system that would be located in the back of this lot right here. We felt that that roof water was good and clean water, that taking that and bringing that right directly into infiltration system would be a pretty good idea to not only kind of lighten the load of the rain garden area, but also help to recharge the groundwater supply on this lot. We have excellent soils out there. We've done some soil testing, and soils are Amistown and Hinckley soils, and they drain pretty well. We also have a pretty, a fairly significant depth from ground to groundwater, so that we can use, utilize the, the ground for, for our stormwater infiltration as well. Landscaping, we, as you can see on the plans, we've included street shade trees along Bridge Road, along Hatfield Street, and including like planting trees within our looped shared driveway as well. There's landscaping indicated on the plans that will be included in the front of all the buildings, the front entryways. We've included some plantings in between some of the buildings for privacy, and we've also indicated that we'd like to put kind of like a low hedge at a corner of Bridge Road and Hatfield Street that would extend around and down along Hatfield Street and come across the island. We felt that this might just kind of give the, this side yard, this corner lot here, a little bit of privacy and everything else for their side yard. We do show on the plan that we wanted to put a couple of light poles, just a little six-foot-high wood, wood light poles, just to give a little bit of lighting to this looped driveway in here. And we're, we're thinking about using light fixtures that have, that are LED and that have solar storage in them, so they would be lit by the solar that would be stored from sunlight. They make the, these fixtures now that, in the top part of the hat, which is solid, so that we can, so that all the light will shine downwards. Some solar storage for lighting the lights in the, at nighttime. Let's see. We also have indicated on the site plan that we would put up some fencing along this property line here for privacy from this, from this single-family residence as well. That's shown on the plans. We're extending back from Hatfield Street.
Is there a way we can see this on this, you're pointing to things that we can't even see?
I apologize, because we can't get it to work on there.
I don't even see it.
I know, I might have to go over the whole thing again.
Yeah, you might, or face us, or, you know, make it more of a community, you know, share with us what you're actually talking about.
Would the Planning Board mind if I turned it a little bit?
No, that would be a good idea, because we have a modified version.
We don't have it in front of us, and now that you've changed the plans.
Yeah, well, thank you for speaking out the bottom and everything else, so I apologize Okay, all right. So if I can just stop for, are you, is there anything that you want me to clarify and point to?
You just said "single-family residence," so I don't know what part you're talking about.
All right, I'm sorry. So we, the property line of our project kind of comes kind of close to this single-family residence right here. That's where you live?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. We understand that, and what we want to kind of do, and I talked to Larry about it, is we want to put up a privacy fence along this whole property line. Basically, it would be six-foot height to about this point right in here, which we think would maximize the, your, the privacy of your backyard, and then we're just going to kind of drop it down to four feet in here as we extend it out to Hatfield Street. I don't know if there's any, yeah. Carolyn, how are you doing with that?
Do you have your USB? I'm just going to put it on my computer, because this computer... So for you all in the audience, let me tell you how this goes. So we get the presentation, and we've got a public hearing open right now, and we will, we did, no, I didn't open it yet, did we?
Yes.
And, and then we'll ask questions to make sure we understand it, and then we'll want to hear from you perhaps, and then so that it doesn't get, so that he's talking back and forth to the group, then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll finalize our discussions, and then, then we'll take a vote on whether it passes. And during that, I'd like for Carolyn to explain the zoning and site plan and, and what actually has brought you before us, so.
Okay, all right. Is I, I think on behalf of Larry, I would just apologize a little bit for the proposal being changed a little bit from the six to the eight. There's a little bit of a reality check set in about what we're trying to propose and the cost of, of the units. We went through a considerable process to design the units that were originally proposed. They were really nice units, to say the least, and we even included an amenity where we had a first-floor master bedroom suite and everything else. We engaged in some discussions with some people in the know and the market in Northampton, and unfortunately, it, it kind of hit us like with a ton of bricks here, that these, these units were going to be way too expensive to build and to try to sell. So, you know, we came in, we met with the Planning Department, and wanted to see what the possibility of kind of moving forward with the meeting here tonight with an alternative building that is much more compact and less costly to build, therefore being a, a lot more affordable, and also a lot more, in all honesty, to market as well. So we went from kind of these master bedroom suites being on the first floor to a more compact unit, which is typically more of a townhouse type of unit, where the three-bed, you know, you, you have the main living area on the first floor and a walk-up to three bedrooms on the second floor. We still had, have the amenity of the attached garages, typically in the, in the, in the back of two of the buildings, but on the other two buildings, we have, as I kind of briefly mentioned, freestanding garages. Were two reasons why we did that for the two buildings that you can see to the left. One was to give us some flexibility for that corner lot up on, on Bridge Road to access that, the, the shared driveway. See, that was kind of important to us, and, and to avoid it going out to Bridge Road. That was a big, that was a big push on our part to try to do that and to respond to the desires of the review committee.
So where's the, on that diagram, where is the?
Well, Bill, it's on the screen now.
Oh, yeah. So that gray shaded area, that smaller one is the new?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the other, the other building, this building right here, because we wanted the, the fronts, the front of the building to be visible from the street, we still felt that was important, even though it was set back considerably. We took, we took that, the garage and kind of separated it and located, as you see on the site plan. We really needed the area within the, the shared driveway loop for our drainage and everything else, so it would, would have been difficult for us to kind of push it, push the building forward towards Hatfield Street to accommodate a connected garage. Also, it would have entailed a lot more pavement that we, than, than what we had on the site here. So a couple of things I just want to kind of point out, in, in going through this redesign, because the, the buildings are a lot more compact and everything else, we were able to redoub, these are significantly more compact, so there's less of a presence of a footprint on the site, as well as trimming some of the, the pavement down. This plan here versus the other plan, we're actually over 2,000 square feet less in impervious coverage than we are with the original plans, because of the footprint, basically because of the footprint of the buildings. That's about 10% decrease in what we had in overall impervious coverage for the site. You know, so that, that was kind of something that, that came out of what we were trying to analyze with this revised design. Not only that, but I think we're going to be able to accommodate a little bit more of the runoff better, because we've increased our inside interior loop area a little bit, where the rain garden is, to better accommodate drainage in that area. We've got some comments back from DPW on it, and, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of in the ballpark with their recommendations. There are a few little things we need to answer, everything else admittedly, but we can kind of get that, or, or address it when we kind of get into a final revisions to the site plan. And that's one thing where we're hoping that we can kind of get, is we can move forward with comments that we might get from the audience and the Planning Board, and go through and revise the plans with this duplex-style project in mind.
Did you say there was less paving?
Yes.
We have less, yes, we have actually, well, it's less impervious coverage than we had on the, on the previous scheme, because the buildings were so big and everything else, we were able to, these buildings are smaller and more efficient, we were able to save on the impervious coverage by 2,000 square feet, the whole, given the whole project.
I'm just having trouble, because on this depiction, the original one, versus that one, it would appear that there's more paving, but maybe I'm not understanding where the lot lines?
I think it's the house size.
It's also the house size.
Right.
Well, we did the calculations, we were in the calculations, and, yeah, that's, you know, it was, I mean, it's not a lot, but, you know, it was something that was, you know, actually a result of this redesign here.
Do you want me to go to the changes for the X facade elevation sheet, or?
Yeah.
Just let me know which plan you want to go to, because I think it's better if you can.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess it's kind of fun to even show what we had proposed before, because it's...
I think it's confusing, actually.
Yeah, right.
So is, have on the screen only our proposal, or is that a mix of this and that?
Well, I, I would say for the sake of confusion, this is the proposal we want to do, what you just saw up there. Okay? Because the buildings are a different configuration, they're smaller, even though the concept was still there for at least the corner unit and the, the corner unit, and then the next unit.
But we don't have that.
Well, we have it just, we have...
I mean, we don't have?
We have it on our desk, no.
Okay.
Right, I, I have some hard copies in here, I don't know if the Planning Board, of, of that plan right there, I have some hard copies in here that I can kind of distribute these out to the Planning Board. Again, I have to apologize to the Plan, Planning Board for this, but it was really kind of critical to us to work out the finances for this, and, and, you know, what the impact was going to be from a financial standpoint was just to the point where we felt we needed to kind of air our, our situation here a little bit.
So are you through, are you ready for questions?
I was going to kind of, Carolyn was going to just show the, the building facade, which you have a picture of it. We did, we did, we gave you a picture of that. This is similar to what, kind of, from a massing standpoint, of what we want to do. You know, this is kind of typical of townhouse units, or a little bit slender, about twenty-two, twenty-three feet wide type of thing. They'll have, we'll have a, a covered entryway on it, there'll be some architectural features on the, the building, everybody can see the, okay. There'll be some architectural features on the front of the building that give us some character. One thing that this shows that we would, we would prefer not to do is the brick, we'll go with some flatboard siding. We think that would be much more compatible with the neighborhood.
So this is what would face Bridge Road?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, and, and again, you know, part of our overall concept, concept was that you wouldn't actually see the garages from, from Bridge Road or from the main streets, because they're in the back of the building serviced by the shared driveway coming off of Hatfield Street.
And why are the, the two garages detached?
Well, the one on Bridge Street was detached so that we can get, have a, access and the connectability to the shared driveway. We, we, it was too tight to kind of have it come in the prototypical way that you see it on the corner, the, the other two corner lots. And also, on the other lot, we really wanted to kind of have the front facade facing towards this Hatfield Street as much as possible, and so we, we, we separated the garage so that we could, we could make that possible as well.
Who is going to own the driveway and the rain garden?
It is going to be kind of similar to a homeowners' association, where all these units will be responsible for maintaining the shared driveway and all, and all the amenities on the site.
All the amenities on the site?
Yes, on, on the whole project site, even though we've got four lots, four individual lots.
One of those lots seems to have the rain garden, it looks like it.
Correct, yes, right, right. Well, and what we're going to have to do, what we, we'll come back to the Plan Board with a plan with the lot lines on it, the, the areas on it, and indicating that the shared driveway and everything else is, would have an easement on it, okay, so that that allows for access for all the units, and also for access for the utilities, especially the water. The water department had indicated that they want to get access on there if they ever have to kind of, you know, shut the water services off to the buildings.
So the old diagrams that we had, had building envelopes on them, those have not changed? They didn't?
Yes, they, yeah, the, the building envelopes, or if you will, the lot lines, we had to modify the lot lines a little bit on that, too, so they're slightly different.
Okay.
If, I'll, I'll remind the Planning Board that back in September of last year, a plan was signed off by you for the, the four lots in here, and was subsequently recorded in the registered deeds, which indicated the lots. They're roughly in this configuration, but, you know, because of the, the buildings and everything else that we had to kind of locate on here and, and get the access to work out to the, the garages, we have, we, we, we have to modify that lot plan. But all the areas will meet the zoning requirements, the setbacks, all the buildings are within the setback requirements, we meet all the open space requirements, which is a minimum of forty, forty percent open space on the lots as well.
Does there need to be a deed restriction or something for the rain garden area to keep that as a permanent structure on?
Yes, so whenever there is, so the reason why this is even coming before you for site plan review is because of the shared driveway piece. And the criteria in the zoning is that the shared, that before construction can happen, well, it, actually, the, the zoning isn't that specific, but documents for maintenance and, and ownership have to be recorded before, you know, the project can move forward. It would probably make sense to specify in a condition to say that the maintenance agreements and ownership responsibilities for both the common driveway or shared driveway and all the drainage infrastructure, there's another, are you still maintaining the same, the infiltration area on that far lot on the?
Yes, yes, and I did, I did mention that, right? And so we still have that.
So there's...
We're still incorporating that structure as well.
So this area back here is also a common drainage area, so both of those need to be, and I would recommend a condition to that effect. And the other thing that I think would be important, it wasn't in my staff report to you, but sort of on reflecting on it more, because of the nature of this project, it's, it's individual, it will be individual lots, is that the decision be recorded with each parcel instead of on one parcel? is that the decision be recorded with each parcel instead of on one parcel with cross references. Many times subsequent homeowners don't pick up on a decision that might be recorded with one parcel. So I would recommend that that become a condition as well.
And for the purpose of people who are listening to this, give me a quick review of, this is in URB. So what are the, the sort of, the zoning allows for certain rules that have already been established for zoning? And so I think it's important to hear that in relation to what's being proposed.
Right, so the urban residential B district allows for single two and three family units by right. However, if you reach a certain square footage threshold for, per unit, which is 2,000 square feet, that could trigger site plan review. And these are, so these would be considered two family units on separate lots. You need, for two family units, you need a 5,000 square foot lot area for each parcel. And then 40% open space, which Bill Cannon noted. And the setbacks are 15 feet on the side, 20 feet to the rear between the structure and the rear property lines. And then from the front of the structures to the street lot lines is a minimum of 10 feet of setback.
Can you give me the square footage for the units and the lots, or do you, have you gotten that drawn up yet?
We, the, we do not have the area indicated for the lots and we will get that on the revised plans.
I think what I'm looking for, for the public to realize that it's a 5,000 square foot requirement and at least the lots we were looking at were up around 9,000 square feet, one of them. So I think, the point I'm trying to make is, you're not shoe holing a building in there, you've got plenty of room to put in a building according to zoning.
Right, well, these two lots in here are about, I, the corner lots, I don't know which one. Yeah. About 7,000, about 7,000 square feet. And the lot with the gray building is about 5,500 square feet. And the bigger lot on the bottom, I think it's about 16, I think it's 20,000. Okay, it's about 20, 20,000 square feet. The whole.
That's the smallest lot.
Yeah, so, you know, they're, they're all over, they're not the minimum size is what I can kind of purport to you right now. And they, you know, again, they meet all the other requirements too here.
Yeah, so this is not a special permit hearing where something that is outside of the zoning requirements is happening. Rather, you're before us because you're asking for a shared driveway, which layers on some rules and requirements that need to go with the deed of those properties so that it stays with them as they change hands in the future. So that's really our, more our purpose here, we certainly care about what you're doing and I, you know, want it to be advantageous for, for good residential property, so, but I'm just trying to make the point that this is not an exception to the zoning, it's rather within the zoning that we've established long before this meeting and that what we're here to really talk about is the assurance that it's within that and, and the conditions that apply to a shared driveway.
If I can just add to that, again, as I mentioned before, I don't know if you lost sight of that or not, but we approached the city in what they call round table or tech meeting, where we had all the departments kind of come in and look at the site plan, look at our concept, make suggestions, you know, bring up issues that we need to kind of address when we, when we submit the final plans to the planning board. And it was, it was strongly felt that this kind of shared driveway concept would be helpful to come off of Hatfield Street rather than having individual driveways coming off of Bridge Road to the buildings and kind of mucking up the traffic flow on Bridge Road. That was, that was a big deal. And since we were kind of entering into that kind of a concept, we followed through with that with the service, the utilities, the sewer and the water as well, to come out of Hatfield Street and service the buildings from the rear, if you will, of the building, rather than going through, you know, individual street cuts and everything else on Bridge Road for each building.
So DPW comments?
Yeah, I can run through those, oops.
I know we've, we've had projects in, in this neighborhood before that have had a great deal of concern about groundwater runoff. And I think the soil testing and the rain garden and the infiltration. And I'm interested in the DPW's opinion on whether you have any, any runoff at all after, in other words, are you containing all your water within the lot lines? And I think that's where this board goes to the specialist at the DPW to do those number crunching exercises and tell us that.
So they did, DPW did issue a stormwater permit this afternoon for the project and there were associated conditions relative to that. The other issues on the engineering side that's related to water and sewer are that they want, the DPW noted that if they're going to be condominium individually owned units, then the water service connections shall have, there should be a meter, one water service and meter per lot, I believe they're saying, so.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Yeah, they said, they typically are per unit, but they said duplex lot here. But at any rate, there's a standard city requirement with how you do the water line, so.
Yeah, I spoke to Dave.
Okay.
On the phone about that.
Okay.
He was quite clear, if these are individually owned, you know, like in the duplex, they're individually owned and they need their own separate water service. And then they'll have their own water meter and then that can be, you know, they radio by, read the water meters and everything else. The only thing that he was, if I can, was curious about was accessibility to the shut off.
Right, so they want an easement to allow the city to.
So that easement, you know, not only for the, for the residents to have access to the garages, but would allow the city to enter into the shared driveway so that they can get at the shut offs, to shut, shut the water off if there happened to be a problem in the unit.
Right, so there were requirements about the connections for that and then in terms of the sewer, same thing. They want specific attachments and connections for clean outs and things like that, so they were, they detailed those. For the landscaping, the row, there's a row of dwarf inkberry along the corner between Hatfield that wraps around Hatfield and Bridge, that corner is planted for three feet as a three foot tall shrub, they do grow taller. So there were two comments, and I would recommend as a condition as well, that they be maintained no taller than three feet, so they're pruned back. That's in the zoning, actually, you can't have fencing or landscaping that's taller than three feet when you're that close to the property line. But that could be a condition so that it goes with, runs with the lots.
So just, just for clarification on that, it's, up at the, see the curb element that's up at the intersection of Bridge and Hatfield Street? There is a green strip from our property line to the back edge of the sidewalk on Bridge Road. And I did show the hedge road kind of going up right next to the sidewalk. Well, they prefer to have, keep, push it back to keep it on our land.
Yeah, I think that's for, that's for sight lines at the intersection.
Right. For the detail sheets, DPW is asking that the type two vitaminius concrete, concrete curb is the, is city standard and shall be used in lieu of type three curb, which is proposed in the city layout.
Yeah, that's to match what's out there right now, Caroline, the type that we showed kind of inadvertently showed it. And we, we'll just bring in the curb that will match what's out there.
No, wait, we want, we don't want the curb to match what's out there, we want it to match what the city requirements are.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's requiring us to be, he's requiring us to be type three.
And it's type three is what the requirement is?
You have type three, the type two it says is the city standard.
Right, right, so we'll, we'll match it, we'll bring, we'll revise that to the type two. We'll match what's out there now on Hatfield Street.
Okay. And then there's details about the cover for utility trench. So you can do a, sort of a general condition about meeting the city standards for utility connections.
Is there anything about the sewer?
And I'll email these to you. The sewer services crosses an existing drain line, the exact elevation's not known, so you have to put in an exterior chimney drop.
Right, well, that, right, and all that is is a drop in the pipe that brings it down to the shelf.
Right.
That's all, that's all it is. We, because the drain manholes out on Hatfield Street are paved over, we couldn't get into the manholes to elevate the pipes to figure out what the exact depth is. We have kind of a, an eye, a close idea on that, but we won't be able to ascertain the exact elevation of that until we start building the manhole and then we'll work with DPW to see where that is. But we know we're gonna, we're gonna have to jump the drain line that we're gonna be crossing at what elevation. I don't know what, exactly what that's gonna be yet, but.
Carolyn, can you back up first on the stormwater, I'm just not sure I'm understanding. It's gonna be a homeowners association, but it's four different lots, I'm just.
Right, so because it's drainage is coming, is being handled by all four lots in sort of a common area. It's similar to a shared driveway where everyone's gonna be responsible for maintaining it and meeting the standards that were stip, or stipulating the maintenance for the system. So my recommendation would be just to record the decisions with each parcel separately, as opposed to having it only recorded once. And that way it carries forward with every single deed when the subsequent property owners purchase.
So does that mean there's in effect four small homeowners association?
No, they all, they all are gonna have the same, there's gonna be one common sort of maintenance agreement. It'll just be recorded, it'll just be.
That's what, it was just, yeah.
Yeah, the same one.
It'd be eight.
Okay, right, okay, all right.
Tell me more about the lights on the driveway.
Do we have?
I don't have light lines.
Detail sheet, is there no detail sheet?
In the, in the original. I don't think there's a lot being planned.
The original plan, it's in the back. So I brought it up, but it's, it's a very low profile fixture, just a six foot height type of wood pole with the lantern type of fixture on it. It would be an LED type of fixture. Which, you know, very efficiently, has a very efficient wattage to it and everything else. That would be powered by a solar element.
Right.
That would be built into the hood of the lantern. But we thought, you know, a couple of little residential scale light fixtures around that loop there might be, might help out.
So, for the audience, these look like what I would have at the end of my sidewalk at the house. But what I want to make sure of is that these people can't see the light source, that the light is intended to go down, but you won't see the light element in there.
Right, right. So they have a stall and a hood on the top. And there's a refract in that that will, that forces the light downward instead of just kind of like a big global type of thing.
You can see into it, but the light source is up in the hat, so you don't, it's not in your eyesight. Any other questions?
There's trash, trash is handled by each individual.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Common dumpster.
Typically, you know, they'll bring out a bin or something and it'll be serviced by somebody will come in on the shared driveway, pick up bins, empty them out and then they'll, similar to a single family residence, bring them back and store them in the garage type of thing. We weren't interested in having dumpster enclosures.
Carolyn, if there was not the shared driveway, would there be room on all the lots to have the driveways go out? Like, I guess three would go to Bridge Road and one would go to, there would be.
They have the frontage.
There would be room and they would have the right to ask DPW for a curb cut for each one of those lots to have their own individual driveway.
Okay.
And utility services.
Right.
Is there any thought to snow storage?
Well, it's my feeling that we do have sufficient area, especially in the outside of the shared commway, on the outside of the, of the shared driveway loop for snow storage, except for where the driveways come out from the garages, obviously, so that would have to be, you know, cleared to the side. There'll be some room on the shoulder and the inside of the loop for some storage and everything else, but they can't, we can't. The rain garden will be off limits in terms of, you know, storing any kind of snow in that area for obvious reasons and everything else. But I think there's plenty, my feeling is there's plenty of room around the outside of the loop for snow storage.
Since that infiltration area in the back is a shared ownership area, could you put it there?
There is room there if we needed someplace to kind of, you know, an extra place to put some snow, but I really don't think it's gonna be necessary, but that, yes, we could.
From my point of view, the shared driveway is advantageous because it's two curb cuts instead of four curb cuts.
Well, four curb cuts could be, well, I don't know how we would, you know, in terms of a duplex situation.
Oh.
I, you know.
You'd only feel that one.
Okay.
Unless they're off of Hatfield Street and not Bridge Road, which is the biggest advantage.
Do you want to open it up to?
Do we have to?
I'm gonna leave the public hearing open while we do.
Can I hear a move to open it up to public hearing?
Oh, thank you. Sorry, it's taken us nearly an hour, but anyone who wants to comment on the project, just come up and state your name and, and your address and we'll get that on the record and hear what you have to say about it.
Good evening, my name is Goose Berkowitz-Goslin, I live at 705 Bridge Road, which abuts the little tiny piece back in the corner. Just for your frame of reference.
Thank you.
I realize that the four lots have been approved and, you know, I'm not here to be obstinate. I just have a whole bunch of little questions that I think would be more of a peace of mind situation that if I could even just focus it to the architect and the builder, if that's okay, or do I focus it to you?
To us, but he's listening, he's gonna answer them, that's.
That's fine. So I'm glad you mentioned the sight lines of the corner there with the hedge. I did not know that specific requirement of keeping it at three feet. I'm also glad that you guys covered the snow. The issue that I, a quick question is who polices it? So for instance, I understand that these are gonna be basically eight separate owners. Which one of them is going to be the one who says, oh yes, it's my turn to cut the hedges because we are all owning it? If there is not actually a formal association that says, oh, we have to do it the end of every month, or, oh, we have to remove the snow, how do we know that the snow, the hedges are being cut and the snow is properly not being put in the drainage area?
Right.
So that's my first question.
Got it? Would you mind going through them and we'll get them all?
Well, that would cover two or three of them, yeah.
Okay, well, do you want to give them the building inspector answer?
Sure, well, the, yeah, I mean. Well, the, yeah, I mean, the, in terms of the hedges, it won't necessarily be the entire association that's responsible. I think that it would just be on that lot because that's where the site distance is, just like anybody in the.
No, they're gonna make it common.
Okay. That's fine. But regardless whether it's common or individually owned, the requirement is of everybody in the city of Northampton. Nobody can maintain any landscaping above three feet when it's at the property edge. So if there's a problem anywhere in the city, here or anywhere else, the enforcement mechanism is through city departments. So you call the building department for notice of violation. In this case, it might be a little bit easier to police because there's an actual permit, and there was discussion about it, whereas if it were anybody else who happened to move into a property anywhere and they're not maintaining their hedges, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to follow up on. In terms of the snow removal, there's a, in their maintenance requirements, they're gonna have to show that the rain garden is being maintained according to design and that it's functioning that way. So they have to submit annual reports to the city indicating what they've done to maintain that. That's not to say that snow won't get plowed occasionally onto the edges of that. I think that I, I would guess that that might happen on occasion.
My concern with this sort of common access is the, the lack of understanding of ownership. We already have to deal with the rehab place that's right across the street from there. And this year, thank goodness, it was a mild winter, but last year, my mother-in-law, who cares for our son, frequently had to walk through an unplowed sidewalk numerous times, in which we continued to call the police department. Nothing got done until honestly I emailed Jesse Adams and Bill Dwight. And then suddenly magically, later on that day, it was completely cleared and for the rest of the season. So what I'm hearing is that I need to police them. I need to make sure that I'm the one who's reporting them if they're piling up all the snow in the drainage and then causing, icing over, causing a flood and sliding down the driveway or into Hatfield. I mean, they might just be not thinking about it. And I'm not saying that they're trying to do it on purpose, but if they're not thinking about it, then I, as a citizen who sees something that's going wrong, needs to actually say, all right, I need to call.
So you're talking about this clearing the sidewalks on the perimeter or the street?
I'm talking about any aspect of this being a shared responsibility. And what I heard from you was, it's the law, you know, it's the city regulations, and anyone can report it. If they are not doing any, if they're not doing their responsibility of maintaining the grounds, which is the hedges, the snow removal, the proper storage of snow, if we get hit, like, what, three years ago, we got hammered and we had snow four feet in the air, and, you know, at some point, they're going to start pushing it into the drainage. And, because, I wouldn't blame them, except for it's going to ice over. And if the slope is down Hatfield and that drainage goes on, you're gonna get an ice slick onto Hatfield and into the neighboring property next door.
So one other thing to think about, though, is that these eight people become their own neighbors. And so I think you can think about it, it's not like they as the eight. I mean, I realize they're new and they're coming in.
No, I understand.
But they're gonna have the first, the first interest in negotiating with each other to not abuse.
I hope so.
Yeah.
But with the, you know, there's no transition period. They could sell lot one, five, and three in the first three months and then not sell the next couple of lots for a few more months.
Right.
And then that's where you get the misunderstandings. I'm not saying anybody's trying to be malicious here. I'm just saying that I see this happening, and unless the, you know, the, it would be pleasant to hear that the seller is willing to stay on for X amount of months after sale or until all of them are sold, just to help them understand what the heck they're getting themselves into. I don't know if that's normal. I know that's costly and whatnot, but I worry about the maintenance when you start talking about the shared aspect. So I just want that on the record.
Got it.
The next thing is, I live on Bridge Road, and we are, if I did my math correctly, a grand total of forty-nine feet and two and a half inches from that road, from literally, not the sidewalk, the road. And every morning at 5:00 AM, there is a logging truck that goes by with the air brakes, and it is a fantastic amount of noise. And what I would turn to the builders and the owner is that if you're putting your houses twenty-one feet away, which is what the last plan was, I don't know if it's changed now that the footprints are smaller. I was actually happy to.
It was a minimum of ten feet or something.
It was ten, it, right, you have a minimum of ten feet. I understand it's all within code. I understand that, and I'm not trying to stop that, but I worry about the sale of the property. And so if we have these nice-looking duplexes there not selling because of the noise issue, we have nails in our walls popping out because of, you know, semi-trucks going by rattling our entire house, and we are at least double the distance away from that road. So that is a concern about property value. If you build these wonderful things and they don't sell, what does that do to our property value? That, that's another concern. I don't know if they have any suggestions about how to mitigate that or not. Another thought that I had along those lines is the power lines for Bridge Road are on that side, so the second-floor bedrooms are going to be, if I'm doing my math right, based upon the old plan, thirteen, oh, is it, no, it's about fifteen feet away, looking at power lines right at the second floor. Again, the ability to sell it is a concern with that situation. The other concern that I have as a citizen is Hatfield is the number-one way that ambulances get to Cooley Dickinson Hospital. When you're doing all this construction, I know they'll find another way to do it, but you're adding on at least eight more automobiles at that corner. So I know you're saying you don't wanna do it to Bridge Road, that'd be four separate, three driveways, then one, but the ambulances turn before they get to Bridge Road. And we hear them and see them go zinging up all the time. That is the number-one route that they take. So during the construction phase, I hope that they're told what's going on. I would certainly would not want to be in an ambulance and have to deal with that. Trying to think. I guess the last question that I have is, as for that little piece in the corner, we hear that it's a, I think you're referring to as a.
Infiltration.
Infiltration system. So there's, there's nothing planned going there, but that's where the water can end up going. So I assume it's being sloped down there.
Yep.
So then my question becomes, if it, you're sloping it during warm days and cold nights during the winter, we have had an ice puddle form on our backyard. As that continues, that puddle is going to get larger and larger because our lawn slopes that way as well. I don't know if there's any way to mitigate that. I don't know if that means that there's gonna be an actual drain into the ground to mitigate that, or if it's just kind of open land. But it's another thought that that can happen in that area, which is a concern. So there are my thoughts. I don't know if the board has any comments to them. I don't know. I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to work through everyone who wants to say something, and then we'll, we'll have the discussion with the builder.
I don't know if this would be improper to ask for or not, but being that we're the three neighbors mostly affected by this project, it might be nice to get the updated plan for us to look at over time to get more on board with the project. I know that.
Yeah, I typically.
You can't stop it, but.
I typically hand mine off to people who have an interest, so I would be doing that.
What I just gave you.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
All right, thank you for your time.
Sure. And if you need another one, we can take some of ours and hand back to you. Other comments?
Yes, my name is Rashad Ogda, and we live on 64 Hatfield Street. It's the, the single-family residence on the side. And I had a question pertaining to the common driveway and the light. You said the light would shine down, but how tall would that light fixture be? And where would it be positioned at in the quarters to our house? Because our bedroom is now on the side where the fence will come up the side.
Right.
So we're kinda worried about how that common driveway affects our.
The, we have located three of these poles on the inside, if I could speak to that?
Yes.
On the inside of the loop. So there is far away from your, from this, this is where you live, right?
Yes.
They're, they're pretty far away. Plus, we have the fence here, as I briefly described, but the poles are only my height.
Okay, see.
So, yeah. Strictly, just kinda like low-key residential little light poles that you find along a front sidewalk type of thing. That's all they are. They're not high light poles, you know? They're gonna be casting light all over the place. So that, that's kinda like the character of the pole. It's a wood pole, and again, it's only six feet high.
Not seven feet.
Well, yeah, plus my, yeah, seven feet there.
But it's changed down.
Right.
I'm, I'm just worried about it 'cause our bedroom, if I'm laying in my bed, I just.
You're gonna first.
I thought it's gonna be four feet on the side of the house, or is it gonna be?
Well, it'll be six feet to this point right in here.
Yes, and then the bedroom is, is kinda.
The bedroom's right in here?
Would be right here, yeah. So is there a pole, is there gonna be a pole like right here, like, or is it gonna be on the other side?
We've got one here, one here, and we've got one over there. So we've got one on this edge over here.
And the greenway kinda. To that, to inside here?
Yes. Right.
If there were a problem, it would be straightened out.
And then another question as well is about, well, now it'd be in six units and six cars now coming into the common driveway. I was just wondering, what about like visitor parking in the, in the common driveway? They had like visitors over.
Well, what we've shown on here is, is a, is a, is a wide-out area on either side of the driveway, six feet wide. You can see it, that would allow for visitors to parallel park along the driveway for some overflow, if they needed a place for somebody to park. So if you got six in the fifteen-foot-wide driveway, that's, that's twenty-one feet, okay? So it certainly is wide enough to have, to allow for somebody to use the driveway and somebody to parallel park over there. So we've got sufficient room for three cars on one side and two cars on the other side to guest park for the use of the individual residences.
And there would be three on, on which side?
On, over here.
Okay.
And allowed for two on the side, on the, on the lower, on the southerly side.
Yeah, and so for context, residential roads are often twenty feet wide, sometimes twenty-two feet wide, so it's gonna feel like a two-lane width. You've also, I'm sorry, you've also got, you've got garages, but you're showing cars not pulling into their garage, so that you've got some parking capability there, where people can put their car in the garage if a visitor is coming. You with me?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the driveway provides access to the garage. If there's, if, if the owner is a one-car owner, then they can park in the garage.
They have a driveway.
Certainly home in the driveway for somebody to park in there as well.
And the, in the back, the irrigation drainage, what is, what is that thing in the back? The groundwater would just collect into the?
Yes. What, what I spoke about was, we are gonna construct in this area right in here, kind of an underground infiltration system.
So you're digging.
It's underground.
Well.
Yeah, we're gonna dig, it, it's something that you wouldn't see above ground, it's below ground. They're called storm tech. They're manufactured by storm tech. They're, they're kinda like half-round sections that you kind of stack together and you put on stone. And inside the half-round is open for water storage. And then that water storage will be stored there until it infiltrates into the ground. What I wanna do is, I want to use that kind of a structure here to collect the roof runoff from this unit, this unit, this, this garage and this garage right here, and bring it into that underground infiltration system. Because it's clean water, and so we can take advantage of it, just kind of directly infiltrating it. And that will also help kinda take a little bit of burden off of everything, everything draining into the rain garden. But it's all underground, you won't see it at all.
Well, what does that mean about that water, about where, where does the water go? Because right here, kinda the, the grade goes down.
Right.
When it comes down to like our property.
Right.
That water then now is being stored there. What stops it from running downhill?
Well, it'll be underground. That water is stored underground, four feet deep. So it gets stored underground and then infiltrates into the soil. So it's not a surface runoff. So what we're gonna, we're gonna take the, the roof runoff from the downs, that's gonna be collected into the gutters, brought down to the downspouts, and brought and collected into roof drains underground, piped underground to this infiltration system. So that's all underground. It won't be dumping onto the surface grade.
And I guess there's another general question is, when they do the, the trash pickup, the, so the dump trucks will be coming into the shared driveway?
Correct.
And picking up from each and collecting and going back out?
Correct. Yeah, that was one, I didn't really mention it, but something that else that come out that that mean was kinda to have a one-way circulation for this loop. And so everybody would, this would be the entry driveway, kinda circle around and exit out this driveway here.
That's all. Thank you.
Other comments? Sure.
Hi, Goose Berkowitz-Goslin again. I was just thinking about the trash pickup thought, and it appears, occurs to me that you could actually have eight different companies coming to and through. Is there any way you can put into the line items that there will only be one that they can all decide upon so that it mitigates the sound and collection issue? Because that would probably help all of us that live right next door, because having eight different trucks go through. I mean, we personally use pedal people, not a problem. Great. But to have eight different trucks go through is a little overkill.
I don't, I'm not gonna answer for them, but I'll tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's like me telling you who you have to buy a service from, but.
Right.
But I think you got, you got your point across, it got heard. Yes.
My name is Deb Tataro, and I own the property at 711 Bridge Road, which is right abutting to the project.
Uh-huh.
My son currently lives there with his family. Just looking at the plans with the new, two new duplexes that were put in as opposed to the single-family, the, both of the garages that are drawn in look a lot closer to the property lines than, is that just kinda like a mis, mis-drawing, or can they be that close to the property line?
It's an accessory structure, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
And so we, they can be within four or five feet of the property line.
Okay.
Because the setbacks that we were talking about were specifically for the inhabited houses.
Okay. And my other question was, in the back near the infiltration system, right now there are currently three old trees there. Are those going to remain there, or is those drawings for new trees?
Those are, that's roughly where those trees are, they're kind of on the outside edge a little bit.
Yeah.
The infiltration system would be right in the center, see where the dotted line goes around?
Yeah.
It would be right in that, in it, within that dotted line area, so we'll be, we'll be far enough back from the trees. We may hit a root, but I don't think it's gonna be...
All the trees that are there, they're going to remain there?
We intend on cleaning them up a little bit, however, I should say, a lot of them are...
Because they're very messy.
Well, a lot of them, they're catalpas.
Yeah.
And they have shed a lot of branches, and there's some stored in the, I, I think...
One of them looks like it's split, too.
Yeah, this guy that has every intention of really cleaning them up and everything else. And if there's something that can be done mutually, if it's mutually agreed upon by the butters, he's certainly willing to kind of discuss that as well.
Because I know over the years, like when my parents first moved in there, the trees were upright. And now they're leaning more and more over our backyard, and we're getting all those catalpa seeds or whatever, and all the rotten apples that are in the yard, and, I mean, it's really messy. And now I've got a young granddaughter living there, and I hate to have her out there with all that stuff, all that debris. But those were just my two questions.
Thank you.
One last comment.
Yes.
My name is Natalie Premon, I'm on 64 Hatfield Street as well.
Yeah.
And just, everyone keeps talking about how busy Bridge Road is, and Hatfield Street is just as busy as Bridge Road. That is not only the main entrance or used way for the ambulances, but it's also one of the main shortcut ways from the highways from North Hampton to Florence. So that's just something I wanted to make aware and also comment on as well, that it's concerning as, as well.
Thank you. Okay, down here, move?
Close.
Bill, closed public comment, Tess seconded. So now we discuss it, and we thank you for your input, I'm sorry it's taken so long to work through it. Questions?
What is it now that we have...
Laid out?
This happen, yes.
Well, I actually wanted to comment, it looks like, and I guess I probably should have done this earlier, but I thought public comment is important. There, it looks like they've included sidewalk on the Hatfield Street, but just for a segment of the parcel. So that should continue at least through that next, the median strip. And then if it does need to straddle the city property or private property, then you all would probably want to put a condition in there that there's an easement granted for the public to walk on the sidewalk that's, you know, on the private property side.
There's a bit of an issue, Carolyn, can I...
Public comment is closed.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll wait and ask you.
Where are you saying, the private property side?
Well, there's, the, it's not clear what the dimension is between the Hatfield Street property line and the, the division between the property line and the private property?
Right there?
Yeah. So if it's, you know, three feet, let's say, and so two feet of the five-foot sidewalk has to be on private property?
Yeah, yeah, no, there should be.
Then we'd need a public, you know, an easement back for the public to use the sidewalk.
Does the sidewalk continue down there, or is this just a, a situation where there's a new project, so we can put in sidewalks where there aren't?
It's the new project, and, and we required it on every street frontage.
Yeah, okay.
I, I got some of my questions answered. I had, I had the sightline problem, I'm happy about pulling back the hedge, that's the right thing to do. I, I think there are a lot of homeowners in town that don't know the three-foot property line edge requirement. But I think in some ways it's more likely that this group will, since it's a new requirement, they'll be reading about buying theirs. And I think, you know, I, I share your frustration about calling about bad sidewalks in the winter, really, I do. But I don't see, at least we're getting sidewalks, that's my blessing, is we just keep chipping away at it, and so at least we're getting sidewalks. And I think that the building inspector is by there often enough for all sorts of reasons that if that hedge is really out of control, I think we would, we would get on it. I pretty much have a list of conditions. I hope the builder heard about the bedroom and the six-foot wall, and it seems such an obvious thing to transition to the lower wall after you've gone past that, that adjacent neighbor. You're right close, I, I don't have the exact transition point, but I think that's just such a careful, that, that's just something that should be done, yeah. I'm happy you explained the infiltration, I don't, you know, you, we had drawings of it. It basically just slows down the water, is basically, it's desired to sort of catch the fast water and turn it into slow underground water. I was happy to hear that. Any other comments from the upper board members? Okay, I'm happy to work myself through the list of conditions, and Carolyn can note them, and then I'll take a, a proposal that just refers to them. So first and foremost, they'll comply with the DPW conditions. That, they'll comply with the sidewalk requirement. That the shared driveway will have ownership and maintenance documents filed, recorded, so...
Priority issuance of building permit?
Priority issuance of the building permit, thank you. That, that will include the shared ownership of the driveway rain garden and the infiltration area. That there'll be a type-two requirement on the... The what?
Cur.
That's a DPW.
Yeah, that's part of the DPW conditions. I, I'm not conditioning the sp, the fence transition, I just think it, it is certainly something that a good new neighbor would do. I like the idea of, of cleaning up the trees because it's good for the, your rain, for your infiltration area. It's gonna be tight putting four-foot infiltration trench in there without injuring those trees. So it seems like to me if those trees don't make it, you'll still be around to put in another smaller tree to replace it and let those start a second life, so to speak.
Do you want to put that as a condition, that if those have to be removed, that...
Well, my thing, yeah, my, my thing to think about them is they're not gonna, it's, it may not be an immediate thing. I mean, you who've had building experience know it's something that happens...
Could be five years out.
But I don't see these units all going through, so I think at least we'll have a season of seeing how those trees are doing. And I think the new tree ordinance that the city's considering would ask that you do that anyway. So just to put in new plantings if you can't save those old plantings.
So they're probably not big enough to trigger compliance with the new ordinance? So, you know, if you felt that, you know, you want to set a timeline for replacement or not? I mean, it's up to you all, you don't, if...
Since the, I mean, since they're on the site, I mean, isn't it required that then, even if they, at any time, they would have to be replaced?
They are showing plantings there, they're not really called out. So I would say that it's safer to put in a condition that if the trees, that the trees on the edge of the property, on that edge are removed for construction or die, you know, they should be replaced.
Or damaged during construction?
Right, during construction, yeah.
Why would that be a prescriptive part of our, I mean, if it's not required, why are we gonna require that?
Well, it's up to you all to decide if you think that it's a good landscape...
I wanted to bring that to the group, because I don't, I'm not sure that that's...
Your point being that since we're here to discuss the shared driveway, that maybe is something that we're sort of airing into our thinking when we're doing site, when we're doing special permit? I see your point, we, we would have no, in a, in a normal site plan, we would have no purview over plantings if they didn't affect any of the rules of the lot.
Well, I would argue you do, once you're in site plan, you're looking at the whole picture.
Right.
And every piece, and what you, there's certain approval criteria. So it's not necessarily that it's not, I mean, you may not feel that that's critical to the overall site plan, which is, which is fine, that it's not, that there wasn't a lot of discussion about what kind of value those trees are, and if it seems like they're actually sort of in poor condition and not really providing a tremendous value, then maybe getting them out of there is actually the improvement as opposed to having something else. And, you know, that, that would be under your purview as well. But if there was an aspect of wanting there to be additional sort of landscape relief or something on that edge, then that's, you know, that is in your purview as well.
I, I mean, I understand what, I think I understand what Dan is saying, but I guess what I'm coming to is, there's trees there now, this is before, after, there should still be trees there. I mean, whether they're new, they're old, whatever. There, you know, there, you know, there were plantings there that were part of the site. And I guess that, and so I'm taking is, yeah, that's perfectly within our, you know, this is what they're showing. It should look like that, whether they're new or old, but it should look something like that when they're done. I mean, I guess that's where, you know.
Thought?
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But if they die, having a condition that they have to be replaced, I'm not, I don't know.
It's a question of if they die, when?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean...
They could be on their way out now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think they are.
But Carolyn, wouldn't it be, because I remember this couple others, wouldn't it be that if they were noted as actually being planted, then they would be responsible for them if, you know, they died in a year? They would have to replace them?
Exactly, that's right.
Okay, I guess that's where I, I'm thinking like, well, what's, you know, they shouldn't be worse off because they're there already.
Right, I think the issue is if they're noted on the plan as part of the overall landscape plan, then something should be there because it's highlighted as part of the landscape.
Right, I guess that's...
So...
Well, I guess I have a bigger problem with the notion that they're in really poor shape, and they're a nuisance to the neighbors. And so if they're in really poor shape and a nuisance to the neighbors, you know, I'd rather see a condition that they come out.
Well, it would be easier to do the infiltration field if they're out, that's for sure.
Yeah. Public hearing is closed, I mean, can we still speak to the...
Yeah, but you can make your best judgment about, well, I mean, you all can decide.
Yeah.
You know, without, and if that's...
I mean, if they're truly, you know, leaning over and they're dropping a lot of undesirable debris on someone else's property, it seems like the developer, in, in a good faith gesture, would take them out.
And replace them?
I don't even know if I care about replacement. I think I care more about taking out nuisance trees.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, don't cut me, thoughts on that. I should make something up, I, I have a strong opinion.
Well, I, I mean, what I hear you saying is that the neighbor is better off by getting that, that problem taken care of by the developer. My thought is the developer is going to be doing so much digging back in that area to put in the infiltration field that they're probably be happy to do that. I'd like to say it'd be really nice to go further and put in some trees, because there were trees there, under John's theory, that there were trees there, they're old trees, they're nuisance trees, but we have trees, and it's right against the neighbors, and it'd be really nice, just as you've done around the perimeter of the rest of it, to add in a couple of trees. So I think there's not a size requirement under this condition, you know, there's just, in fact, I'm, I'm thinking it's not a condition, it's a discussion that we've had.
Right, exactly.
And that's the, that's the situation.
Yeah. Okay, so no condition about the tree?
No condition about the tree.
Though, just one last chance, you know, speak up for the trees. Not having to worry about keeping the trees would make it easier for the developer if they didn't, if they just said, you know, if they don't have to worry about, because I mean, there is an effort to protecting them and doing all that.
Yeah, they would have to really do some...
So, I mean, it does, it could add, you know, it could ease the burden of doing the infiltration by saying, well, we have to worry about these trees, we'll do this, we'll be more efficient, we'll put four trees in, and then, you know, in 20 years, they'll look as big as these, and so...
So maybe the condition is to either protect the trees that are there?
Or...
Or pull them out and replace them with appropriate replacement trees?
Yeah, with four trees.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess. But we don't want them digging and make, having those trees die, is kind of what...
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So can I get a nod of whether that seems like a reasonable thing to ask for four new trees? Take those trees out and get four new trees? And that, we're talking smaller planting trees at that point?
Of course.
Yeah, okay.
It's either or, I thought.
Yeah. There you go.
Either protect them if they want to.
Right.
Or replace them.
Or replace them. Okay, any other conditions belong on this?
What about the new property lines?
Well, you'll see the A and R, they'll have to come in with a revised A and R with the property lines, and they'll have to show that they're meeting the open space requirements and stuff. The only other thing I would add is just for the sidewalk construction to continue, and then that, that an easement be given to the city that allows the public to pass on that sidewalk, if it's on, if it has to straddle private land.
Okay, yeah, I had mentioned sidewalks, and I, I thought that got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have did.
But, yeah, and that, but I did not cover the easement.
And you mentioned the fence, but you don't feel like we can be prescriptive about... We've suggested what might happen, but we can't, okay.
I do. So moved?
Second.
Comment?
Yeah, it's okay, no, I just had a question, just kind of out of curiosity. Carolyn, do you know how the construction will be staged? I mean, are they going in and building all the, the buildings at once? Does the infiltration and the roadway go in? Like, what is the sequencing?
Well, I don't know about, you know, which lots will go first, but, you know, the... They'll have to, I can look at the stormwater permit, actually, but the, you know, once there's impervious surface, they're gonna have to be handling the drainage on site. So they might be doing phasing so that they're still, they still need to capture that even during construction. They're not gonna complete the rain garden till, you know, after probably a significant portion of the projects.
Right, till they've got enough impervious.
Well, and also so they don't damage the plantings. But I don't know the order of things. But, and I'm, and I think that could shift too without much problem, you know, if they think they're gonna build one house first and then they shift to another one, that should be okay.
And during construction, I mean, is the size of the project enough to warrant a SWIP?
It's over an acre.
Would you go on each individual lot?
Well, they already have a stormwater permit for the whole thing, and it's a common land, plan of land for development. So they've got the stormwater permit, and they have to abide by that.
Okay.
Just as FYI, we have filed a SWIP.
Okay.
Because we, we took it, that the, the lot, the whole entire parcel is 48,000 square feet, okay?
I'm glad, I'm glad Carla does.
We're just gonna be disturbed at it, so we've, we have filed a SWIP.
You did file a SWIP, okay, okay, thank you. Stormwater, I'm not sure, pollution prevention.
Got it.
That's with the EPA.
So moved? So moved, and seconded, all in favor? Thanks, sir. I think, I hope everyone thinks it was a useful night, I, I feel, I feel pretty good about this one, thank you. Thank you for your time.
If you want any of these...
I did. I did. John moves, that we approve?
Yes.
Seconds it, all in favor of approving the minutes? I read them carefully, they were a nice set, both of them, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Dan, seconded by Ann.
All right, who's the second on the minutes? John?
Can I, can I ask you?
John, the minutes, and Dan seconded it.
Are you okay for Tuesday?
This procedural, we think, where we open it to public hearing and then close it, and then you're not...